Good evening, everyone. We're certainly happy to have all of you here. Before we begin, would you bow your heads in a word of prayer with me, please? Most holy and eternal God, our Father, we want to thank you for this day. Thank you for all that you have done from the early rising until this moment. We ask you to continue to bless our city. Continue to bless the citizen in our city. Keep us healthy, keep us safe. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Certainly, we are happy to have all of you. But before I begin, we are so honored to have our former city administrator, John Yao, here with us. Let's give him a clap. And so glad to have him, always glad to see him come with us. And all of you that are here, we are, all of y'all especially, and we are certainly happy to have y'all here with us. Thank you so much. At this time, oh, let me pause. I'm happy to have my president here, the president of Claflin University, Dr. Dewan Womack, the most distinguished and prolific president. Stand up so they can see you, doctor. This is my president. Thank you so much. Item number one, consideration of January 16, 2024, City Council minutes. Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman and second by Councilman Kalu. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As have it, the motion is carried. Item number two, consideration of January 30, 2024, special City Council minutes.
Move for approval.
Motion been made by Dr. Kalu.
Second.
Second by Councilman Strowman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. All right, we have, I've never known Wadi's name to the day. I thought his name was Wadi. So we have retired Mr. Harry W. Fogel Jr. from the city of Orangeburg. And we want him to come and our city administrator and his wife and his supervisor, Roger Brandt.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, all those who are in attendance, in person and virtual. I've had a number of these bittersweet moments here over the past few years where we get an opportunity to acknowledge, recognize, and thank our city employees for their many years of service. And during this time, one thing that has stood out to me is the number of employees that we've had that have served for many, many years. And to me, that's a reflection of the dedication and commitment that they have to not only this organization, but the entire city and the community at whole. No one has served quite as long as Mr. Brandt here, but Wadi follows very closely in his footsteps. And I know that he has been close to Mr. Brandt. He's served as his right-hand man, so to speak, throughout all these years. And in serving 25 years, 25 years, I just want everybody to take a moment and to acknowledge that. So fortunate to have had you serve for all those years. And so fortunate for you that you've supported him. And I know family and friends over the years have supported you in your service to our community. And so I just want to thank you for all those many years of service and just acknowledge you and recognize you for that. And I wish you the best in retirement, spend the time with those grandchildren that I know that you have plans to do. And just know that if there's anything that we can do, that we're here for you.
Thank you.
All right, and I'm going to ask Mr. Brandt to come forward and say a few words, if you don't mind.
Wadi, it's been a pleasure working with you. When you came with us, you weren't nothing but a puppy. And I took you sort of like a son. And I know sometimes we'd have our little talks, and sometimes you probably thought, well, he's talking to me like my daddy talked to me. But I try to do that with all of you.
Yeah.
And we love you, and we're going to miss you.
Appreciate you too.
Appreciate all you've done.
Thank you, sir. Well, Wadi, I want to say, I've been the mayor for 10 years. And I have, when I used to come in early before I went back to school, I would see you out there blowing the sidewalk and working with the flowers. I don't know what we going to do now. You'll find somebody. Yeah, but I appreciate your service and what you, your contributions you've made to the city of Orangeburg. And I speak from the sentiments of the anti-council. We appreciate you. On behalf of the council, says, whereas Mr. Harry W. Fogel faithfully served the city of Orangeburg for 25 years, one month, and three days, with retirement date of January 26, 2024, and whereas he through his long and faithful service contributed greatly to the successful operation of the city of Orangeburg, and whereas the City Council in recognition of a fine contribution rendered to the city of Orangeburg want to inscribe on record its appreciation, now therefore be resolved that the mayor and members of City Council and the council assembly do officially recognize the faithful service rendered to the city of Orangeburg in the capacity in which you served the city. And we take pride and commend in you for a job well done. Be therefore, be further resolved that a copy of this resolution and appreciation for your devotion and duty to the city of Orangeburg be placed in the minute book in the city, and a copy be furnished to Mr. Fogel in recognition for his service passed by the City Council. And in the city of Orangeburg and state of South Carolina on the 20th day, February 2024, thank you so much for your job well done. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Okay. And this is, this is a token of the city's appreciation. And when you wear it, think about us. Okay. And we're going to ask Mr. Brandt, if you can come up, y'all can come up and get a picture. This way, come, this way, and you're right. Come this way, miss. Okay, yeah, come, come. Thank you. All right, Mr. Wadi, we're going to ask you to say something. Do what? We're going to ask you to say something. Would you like to say something? Would I like to say something? Yes, sir.
Well, I want to start with Mayor and Council. Thank you for 25 years. Sidney, it's been nice getting to know you these last couple of years that you've been here, and you're going to be missed. Mr. Roger, I've always considered you as one of my dads. I really have.
Yeah.
Really have. And I appreciate the opportunity that you give me and Mr. Yao giving me 25-plus years ago to come here, to work here. It's been a real honor and a privilege to work with all of you, and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We wish you a healthy and a happy retirement.
Thank you, sir.
You know, to have the happy retirement, which you got to keep a honey doing it.
Mr. Yao, would you like to say something to Wadi?
Mayor, I'll be very brief. Easily, I'm napping now to prepare for jeopardy later. But I've had an opportunity to come back, I think, to about four or five council meetings since I retired, and it's always a lot of fun to see former colleagues and friends. But each time I've come back, it's been to honor what I consider a great employee and friend, and that's why I'm here tonight. And Wadi, thank you for your many years' service while I worked here.
Thank you, and may God bless you. Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have an appearance. We have an appearance tonight from Ms. Candice Barry Vaughn, Orangeburg County Community of Character update. If you would come to that podium, Ms. Vaughn, and state your name and your address and make your presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Candice Barry Vaughn. I reside at 377 Brookside Drive here in Orangeburg. So to Mayor, Council, city officials, as you know, I am Candice Barry Vaughn, the executive director of Orangeburg County Community of Character. And I bring you greetings on behalf of our board president, Dr. Isaiah McGee, and our board members. And I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to appear before you this evening. Now, I was told in the beginning, I had five minutes. Sidney told me to scratch off my laundry list, so I'll be quick. Next year marks our 25th anniversary, and we could not have made it this far without the support of you, the city, our partners and other partners, Claflin, the county, the school board. And so we just want to thank you for your continued support as we look forward to strengthening our partnership with you. So because of our longstanding partnership, I thought it was past time to come and update the council on where character is and what we've been doing in our program and initiatives. So as you know, we do have our Citizen of the Month. We still continue that program where we ask community members to nominate your coworkers, friends, neighbors, colleagues, if they exemplify the character trait for that month. And we know we have thousands of citizens that do that. So I am encouraging and asking everyone to please go out, nominate, and submit that every month. This month, our character trait is confidence. And we are spotlighting Dr. Shannon Smith, who is the associate professor and chair of the nursing program at Claflin. We're also doing our community kindness mission, our character care closet, and we continue to focus on providing basic needs for students in pre-K through 12th grade, school supplies, toiletries, and hygiene items. We've also been able to offer support to the Edisto Children's Center. We just had our 22nd Annual Fifth Grade Outstanding Character Program on the campus of Claflin University, who's been our longstanding host partner for that event. We had over 900 students, fifth graders, attending, including OP and Felton. And I'd like to thank Mayor Potem and Councilwoman Greivis for joining us on that event also. Our new initiative we're doing this year is Young Leaders in the Making, and it's a program focused on developing fourth and fifth graders on character and leadership development. We held our first session after the character program on Claflin's campus on the second. We have 30 kids participating this year in the program. It's the 16 character honorees plus the 14 students that participated in the school district's oratorical competition. So we're starting our program off with 30 students. We're super excited. We have three more sessions to meet with them during the half-day sessions of the school district, so we're excited about that. And we're also excited to, Community of Character has been awarded a grant for a mural project in the county, and we are excited to be able to partner with ADA and their project on a mural project they're doing. So thank you, Administrator Evering, and to Councilwoman Greivis for supporting this partnership. We look forward to working with you and making this a fantastic event. And yes, I do have a laundry list, but like I said, I was told I only had five minutes. So before I take my seat, I would like to ask the council to consider granting a character day here in Orangeburg that one day each month, the same day that is designated, be chosen as a day of character in Orangeburg, which will allow the community to, us and the community to promote character, which we know is so important, and what we do of our residents to continue to thrive as a city. So that is my ask and your consideration. So on that note, I will take my seat.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
No, no questions, but we want to congratulate you on the program that we had at Claflin University on the second of, I think it was, it was awesome.
Thank you.
And we thoroughly enjoyed it, so keep up the good work and always come to Claflin University.
Well, I could not do this without our Claflin family. So Dr. Womack, you're here. Thank you so much for that continued support.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Barry. Ms. Vaughn, we appreciate it. Y'all forgive me, I skipped over the recognition for February Community Character trait, and it is confident. And confident is feeling sure, feeling sure of yourself and your ability. And we ask everybody to adopt this character trait for the month of February. Thank you. And now we will have an appearance for Ms. Shanika Aikens, Aiken Self-Esteem Advocate Faith and Education Safe Update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, Mayor Butler, Counselor Strowman, Counselor Dr. Kalu, Counselor Kit, Counselor Hannah, Counselor Knotts, and Counselor Greivis. My name is Jada Milhouse. I'm the president of the SAFE organization, where we promote self-esteem, advocacy, faith, and education in the lives of today's youth. I am a junior at the High School for Health Profession and the president of this organization, as I've stated before. SAFE has helped me learn how to work better with others and publicly speak and learn how to be a leader.
Hello, everyone. My name is Isabella Elwine. I am 13 years old in the seventh grade, and I attend Westfield Academy. I enjoy doing theater, and I am in Girl Scouts. And since I've been in the SAFE organization, I learned how to work with others and gain confidence. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Good evening. My name is Kirsten Thomas. I'm a 12-year-old sixth grader attending William J. Clark Middle School. I'm the vice president of this organization. I am very thankful to be speaking here this evening. Since being a part of SAFE, I have learned to gain a sense of responsibility and to be more confident. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Jayla Williams. I attend William J. Clark Middle School. I am in sixth grade, and I am a 12-year-old. Since being a SAFE organization, I learn to speak with power and to be a leader.
Let's give them a round of applause. Good evening to all of you. I present to you our Youth Advisory Council members. The Youth Advisory Council consists of young women aged 11 through 17 who aspire to lead among their peers and in the community. They provide, we, the SAFE organization provides speaking training. We also nurture their strengths and abilities and inspire them to embrace their true potential. Just to give you an update as for the SAFE organization, we are still working in the schools with Girl Circle. Girl Circle is a small support group for girls ages in middle school and high school, and we talk on different topics that are relevant to them. On your desk, you should have all of the information in regards to what we're doing and also a profile of who we are. So I won't go through the whole spiel on tonight. Tonight's activity was specifically for them to see what their leadership in Orangeburg County looks like. They often tell me that they want to be leaders, and that that's why they're a part of the group. So they have, they have a clear vision of what leadership looks like in the community. Last and surely not least, you also have on your desk, on March 23rd, we are celebrating 10 years of community impact. And we are inviting all of you to please join us on March 23rd at the Orangeburg County Conference Center for a night of just celebration, to reflect on what God has done for us for these last 10 years, and to just look back at all the wonderful things that he has done for us. Again, we invite all of you to please join us, and let's give our Youth Advisory Council another hand.
Thank you all so much. Y'all are doing so many exciting things, and we are very proud of the young ladies. Our new business, Mr. Evering.
I'm so impressed with those articulate young ladies.
Yeah.
Especially the ones that can remember all of your names. It took me about a year to remember all those things. Great job. Mayor, Council, good evening again. For your consideration, we have a resolution pledging to practice and promote civility in the city of Orangeburg. As you all may know, the Municipal Association has been promoting civility throughout local government for the past couple of years. And unfortunately, we have a rising sentiment of incivility, especially as it relates to public discourse. And so the Municipal Association is encouraging local governments to adopt a resolution pledging to have more civil discourse in municipal governments. I think it's a great thing. It's a great example for our young people, and it's something that we certainly want to adopt, not only throughout the organization, the city of Orangeburg, but the entire community. And so for your consideration, there's a resolution here before you.
Are there any discussions before I read the resolution? If not, a resolution pledging to practice and promote civility in the city of Orangeburg. We need a motion. We need a motion.
Move for the adoption of the resolution.
Motion's been made by Councilman Kit.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knotts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As have it, the motion is carried.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Council. The next item for your consideration is first reading of an ordinance closing Golf Avenue from Clark Street to Magnolia Street and transferring that portion of the road to Claflin University. Just by way of background, if you recall, Dr. Womack, last year, I believe it was, it's been some time, came before you and talked about a request to close that portion of Golf Avenue because there's such high density in terms of the traffic with the new student union coming online here shortly. We just, they just wanted to promote public safety. Initially, our city attorney was going to go a route of doing the road closure via the court system, but has subsequently found a more efficient and faster way to do it, and that's just by giving y'all the consideration to pass an ordinance that would, basically we would transfer that portion of the road to Claflin University and allow them to close the road at their consideration. And at this time, if you don't mind, I'll ask Dr. Womack to come forward to offer.
Just before we call Dr. Womack. Councilwoman Greivis has a statement that she needs to read.
Sure.
Yes, please. Pursuant to this matter related to the closing of Golf Avenue from Clark Street to Magnolia Street and the transfer of said property to Claflin University, I wish to recuse myself from discussions and voting due to a potential conflict of interest based on my position as an elected official and being an employee of Claflin University. Therefore, I recuse myself from item number four, this first reading, as well as any other issues pertaining to this matter going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, I want, I want, just for the record, I want everybody to know that we'll close, when this pass will be closing Golf Avenue from Clark, from Clark Street all the way up to Magnolia. That's want that get out in the record so that people know, you know, when they say Golf Avenue, I want them to think they're whole Golf Avenue, but from that point. So we're going to call, we can call the president up to have some words.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't turn to these young ladies from the SAFE organization. I am recruiting for Claflin University today, so we, you guys are amazing, so don't leave this amazing city, come to Claflin University, okay? All right. Again, Mayor, Council, thank you all for allowing us to be here today. I want to preference, again, I'm with our director of public safety and our students. So I would like our students from Claflin University, please stand. All students from Claflin, please stand. And it was about 50 who wanted to come, and we said, we don't need that many. We are family here in Orangeburg. This topic is near and dear to me for multiple reasons, you know, as we celebrate 155 years of existence in this community, we have been an anchor for a very long time. We understand the essence and importance of what it means to be a community member. But safety and the well-being of the constituents that we serve is our top priority. As I stated last time I was here, Golf Street causes us major challenges, and it's progressively getting worse. I will first also would like to thank Chief Austin for always responding when we call. But as you all know, the complexities of that as a state road and ability to be able to manage it, and it puts our Public Safety Office in a very compromising situation. We had a student town hall the other day, and that was a topic of discussion regarding for probably about two hours from students and parents of saying they don't want their kids to come back to Orangeburg if we can't find a way to have a solution that's there. I want to go on record to say, if it's not if something happens, it's when something happens, right? And I just hope that we can be proactive in this space to make the right decisions. We've escaped, and we'll show a quick video over and over and over, multiple deaths. And I showed the video last time, and I have one that's just from two weeks ago, that 17 shots rung out in that space, multiple windows shot out, and you can see kids just walking past and just, thank God, the person shooting didn't know how to shoot. And again, so that if we're not careful, we'll be here having a different conversation later, and I just, hopefully that we'll, we can think about the safety. We are committed. We just invested 44 million right on that corner. In the next 18 months, we'll invest another 30 million. We're putting our resources there. And again, it's going to cost us to manage the street, right? So it's not something, but we will take that responsibility to ensure the well-being and the safety of these kids, that 2,000 students that come to the institution, we promise their parents they'll be safe when they're there, but that's the only place that I cannot control their safety, and that's things that continue to happen. So I'll let our chief just give some real stats and some data really quick, and then we'll be out of your way.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen that are here and that are listening virtually. I'm Melvin Williams. I'm the director of public safety and chief of police at Claflin University. What I want to share with you is just a brief video that I'll narrate. I've chopped it down, but we've left enough to show you exactly what took place at 11:40 on the 18th. So can you start the video, please? The silver car that you see in the video there arrived about four minutes before what you're looking at now. The individuals that are standing closest to the stairwell, the one that's in what looks like the green or the gray, is a young man that got out of that car. The two young men, one in the red, I call them red hoodie and black hoodie, they walked up. Now, the backstory to what you have here, and this is what we deal with, is the young lady that's there has a relationship with both of them. So the young men walk up, there's an exchange of words between them, and then these two start walking off. As you can see, the car door opens, the ones that are on the inside of the car is now engaged in it. They're walking, they're looking back. I truly believe that they sensed that that was not the place for them to be at that moment, so they walked away. But watch what the car does. The young man gets in, he then gets out of the driver's side, comes around. If you see inside, his buddy shifts over. He takes the passenger seat. We've got students that are out there, and the young lady's walking across the street as they start to pull off. Watch the muzzle flash. There, 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 there. They're shooting down the street at the other individuals. They're down on the corner, and that's what they do. They take off running. Now, the next day, we go out, we stand where those shots were fired from, and we see our science building. As we walk over, then we start to see where the rounds actually struck the building, the two light spots on those black panels. Those are bullet holes. And, there's a bullet hole. Our hope is that we will be able to control some of this. We certainly would never stand here and say that we're going to eliminate it, because then we wouldn't be truthful, because we don't have that power to, you know, to, to eliminate all of these types of things from happening. But I think we can control it, I think we can reduce it, and one of the major ways of reducing it is by, by eliminating the vehicles that are driving in now. The individuals that did the shooting were, to our knowledge and based on the investigation that we did, were not Claflin students. They were individuals who drove in to visit with the young ladies that, that they were talking to. And that is part of a continuing narrative, a continuing story, individuals driving in, and then they jump in their cars and they take off. I also would, would like to thank Chief Austin and his team. They have never, never hesitated to be of assistance to us. You have a, an incredible team of men and women who, who are serving the, the city of Orangeburg and who have embraced us as a, as, as colleagues and are, are there to assist us. We hope that, that this will, will be approved, and it will give us an opportunity to do even more to protect our students and to protect the, the community of Orangeburg. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions for Dr. Womack?
Yes, just one question. Now, from Clark, President?
Yes, ma'am.
From Clark to Magnolia, will that cover all of Claflin's area that we have? You heard say "we have."
Right. That's a loaded question. Yes, for, for proximity of, because right on Clark, on the corner, is our Counseling Center. And then right next to it is the Upper Bound House, where the kids from the community come. And then the next, you go in Molecular Sciences across the street, then you go down, it's the gravel parking lot. And again, it's not public yet, but you'll hear it here first. We will break ground in probably about four weeks on a new nursing building right there where our Student Health Center is, so we'll be building a new nursing building right in that space right there as well. And, and coming around to, so for us, ultimately, our goal is to expand, to go further down, but, but right now, the safety and well-being, we can control that market share, that's where our classes are, that's where those pieces are right now.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to ask a question.
Yep.
Is this our property to give? It's not state property?
Can you answer the question?
I, I thought state property, or Claflin owned that street.
I wish we did.
Well.
No, no, sir. It is, it is currently, belongs to the, the city. We got it from DOT with the intent of hopefully transferring it to, to Claflin, so currently the city owns it. DOT could not transfer it to, to Claflin.
I have no problem with it, but I think if you go back to the eighteen-hundred in the history book, find out who gave that property to Claflin.
Did you go to, tell him, Richard?
Huh?
Your granddaddy.
A Stroman gave it to the Claflin. I'm not taking credit for it. A Stroman gave that property. I think it was like a hundred something acres in there. And I think Claflin sold up some, some of the state.
No, we didn't sell it, we lent it after lending.
But go back and check your history book.
Yes, sir. Will do.
Or go to the courthouse.
Yes, sir. But if you got another hundred and fifty acres, we'll take that as well.
Well, the Stromans do have other land for sale.
Praise the Lord. If you'd like to give.
Okay, Mr. Uh, Mr. Hannah want to say something, please?
Thank you, Mayor Butler. I have, you know, I'm not a language anything, but when we say closing Claflin Street, I mean closing Golf, some of our citizens may think we're closing Golf all the way down to, uh, what do they call that area down there?
The hills.
The hills. But that word "closing," we used to close, it's gonna take a while for them, I don't have a problem with if it stays that way, but I know we relinquishing that part of the school street to Claflin, which is very good for both parties, the city and Claflin. But I would just, that word "closing," I have some issues with that. Thank you, sir, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Have you had any type of opposition from the residents around that area?
Well, our, when we presented here, one, um, last year, we did have a resident that was not in favor of it at that point, but that house has still been vacant for the past eighteen months, nineteen months, I don't know if it's still, person still stands that way or not.
Okay.
Dr. Two, I want to tell you this, that the opposition that he had, the person owned the house, they don't live there.
They don't live there.
No, sir. You know, uh, uh, I just want to give you some dynamics, because I know it so well. There, there's nobody, nobody lives up in there. Nobody lives up, up in there. It's just that, uh, where, from Clark Street on down, uh, that's where people live. Yeah, 'cause, uh, um, the, the, what, what, what's the lady name? The hub, uh, not the hub, but, uh.
Thomas Hubbard?
Not Hubbard, the take the bus ladies, take the bus, they live down there, and what, mister, what's the man, your friend, they live in that brick house?
Evans.
Evans, Mr. Evans, them live down there, but they can get in and out.
Right.
Nobody lives up in there.
And we called a, um, when the former council member was here, he called a meeting with all of the constituents involved and engaged, and it was, uh, South Carolina State, Claflin, and folks from the community to be able to have the meeting as well. Yep.
So, eventually, if you, if we give you those areas where you have to, you know, maybe have a fence, right, you want to be fenced in, do you have any easement, will you have any easement for the people that will live around that area?
Yeah, it's only one house that's right there right now, that's not, it's one home that is not owned by Claflin or South Carolina State. Well, two, um, that's there. But, but, as we're defining closing off, and Director Williams has begun to execute the plan, it, it still will be a drive-through access, right? So, with those two entities, they will have a simple sticker, and soon as they pull to the, it automatically opens, right? But we're just trying to stop traffic. It is Golf Street after six PM is a totally different place between eight and five. It is, uh, and, and again, the amount of, with the building we just put right there, the main crossing, and I hadn't got into the speed of cars that come around there, right? And, um, the, the, the safety element, you can't imagine how many media calls I've received about this. And I continue to say, we're working diligently with the city, because we're in partnership to make this happen, but, um, some of those folks have seen what has happened out there and been able to witness, like today, when we're coming, walking over, I mean, this car was going sixty-five miles an hour as a group of people were just going across, and it was just, thank God, they just didn't get hit.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, Dr. Womack, let me ask this question.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned, um, the other persons on Golf Avenue in attendance, I think, um, Mr. Hair might have executed that particular conversation with the residents. Was it favorable from the persons who actually are property owners?
Well, um.
Other than that one individual?
Yeah, that individual never showed up.
She never showed up.
She never showed up.
I mean, they never showed up.
Yeah, yeah, never showed up, and on multiple meeting scheduled attempts.
Okay.
But the councilmen did show up, folks from state and from Claflin. Yeah. And the other home that is there, I, I've been here five years in July, and it's never been a, it's been vacant ever since, so I don't know, um, if, who really owns that one or anything.
That's Mr. O E, that's O E Glover's daughter, you know, his, they had their house when we was in student, that used to be a boarding house. But it belonged to O E Glover, and it, it hadn't been occupied in years.
Okay.
Years.
But, but I will say this, and I think Chief and Austin can say, again, it's not for this meeting, but someone has to get a hold of that space because the amount of illegal, so you've seen multiple shootings that happened to South Carolina State. When we run our videos, that's where they're coming from, that backyard. They're coming, cutting through that yard to get to state, it's a fence that's broken over there, and they come to the parking lot, and it's there, so it's, uh, yeah, and we have those videos to share as well.
Are there any more questions for the President or, or for the Director of Security of Claflin? If not, we would like to entertain a motion for this, please. I mean, let me read it first, please. Closing Golf Avenue from Clark Street to Magnolia Street, transferring such road to Claflin University and providing for related matters. And we'd like to entertain a motion, please.
Mayor and council members, we move that the ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash
one.
At one?
Okay.
Closing for Avenue, Golf Avenue from Clark Street to Magnolia Street, transferring to Claflin University.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kidd.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knotts, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you. I have number five, Mr. Everie.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor, Council. The next item for your consideration is first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter Two, Administration of the City Code by adding Section Two Point Five Point Four to provide for a vendor procurement protest policy. And let me offer some background if I can. The city has applied for and been awarded an EPA Brownsville Grant, but in, um, part of the process of receiving that grant, we have to have a vendor procurement protest policy. It would be akin to like an employee grievance policy, it's, it's analogous to that. We don't have a formal policy in place, and so, this would basically put a formal policy in place so that we can be in compliance with the guidelines of, of that particular grant. And, and basically, what it allows is that if there's a, a vendor, and they, for whatever reason, want to, to protest, let's just say, for example, how an RFP was executed or awarded, then they would have a process to follow. Or if the vendor, for example, turned out to have falsified or did something illegal to obtain a contract, then we could actually go back and, and disqualify that vendor. So, um, this policy would allow for that.
We need that in place. Are there any discussions for Mr. Everie before I read the ordinance? For me, anybody, any discussions? Okay, if not, an ordinance amending Chapter Two, Administration of the City Code by adding Section Two Dash Five Dash Four to provide for a vendor procurement protest policy. So, we needed a motion, Council.
I move for a passage of the motion.
Uh, motion's been made by Councilman Kalu.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stroman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any eyes have it, the motion is carried. Okay, thank you. Matters pertaining to Department of, uh, Public Utilities.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have before you third reading of an ordinance to provide for a twenty-one million dollar combined public utility systems revenue bond. As you recall, on previous readings, explained to you and the public that this is to further our efforts of, uh, uh, reinvesting in our electric divisions, substations, and, and all the infrastructure that goes along with that, as we move forward to make our system more resilient, reliable, and safe.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Harley regarding this ordinance before I read it? Any discussion? Okay. If not, making provisions for the term and conditions of twenty-one million combined public utility system revenue bond of the city of Orangeburg, South Carolina, authorized by the Bonds Ordinance of the city of Orangeburg enacted January twenty eighth, twentieth two thousand twenty-four as amended and other matters related thereto. We need a, we need a motion.
I move for the passage of the Department of Public Utilities, this third reading of an ordinance.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilman Kidd.
Second motion.
Second by Councilman Kalu, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion is carried.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we'll have, uh, our Bond Attorney, Mr. Theodore DeBose, will present item number seven for us.
Okay, all right. Would you come forth, Mr. DeBose? Is it DeBose?
Thank you, Mr. Harley, Mayor Butler, Members of Council, great to be back in front of you. In connection with the bond issue that this council has just approved, I've put to Mr. Harley some policies and procedures for, um, compliance with the federal tax code. The bonds that you've just authorized are going to be issued to South State Bank for twenty years at an interest rate of four point one-six percent. And you might say, well, that sounds a little low, given what I know about mortgage rates right now. The reason it's a little low is because the interest on the bond is exempt from taxes. And so, banks are willing to extend credit to you at a lower interest rate if your bond is tax exempt. In order to keep that bond tax exempt, however, there are certain things that the Department of Public Utilities needs to do from time to time. The Internal Revenue Service a few years ago started making inquiry of cities and counties and other issuers of bonds, whether you had such policies adopted by the governing body. And in fact, there's a, there's a form that has to be filed next week, it's called an information return for a tax exempt bond, and it asks that question on it, whether those have been adopted. Most folks in my position around the country believe that adopting it is, uh, might help you avoid a, what's called a random audit from the Internal Revenue Service, and you do want to do that just because it's expensive. You have to hire me or somebody like me and spend a lot of money going through a lot of records with the IRS. They do have a random audit program, however, again, we believe that adopting these policies and procedures lessens the, uh, the likelihood that you would be picked for one of those audits. So, the council, Mayor Butler, so minded would adopt it, and then they would be implemented by Mr. Harley and his staff. It doesn't require an ordinance, just one vote of council, and then we'll go on and make sure they're doing their compliance work. Thank you.
Okay. Do y'all have any questions for the Bond Attorney? Kalu? Not, Mr. Grievous? Okay. All right. We're gonna read, uh, this resolution. A resolution adopting tax advantage bond compliance policies and procedures and tax advantage bond procedures related to the two thousand twenty-four series of bond ordinance. And we need a motion, Council. We need a motion.
Mayor and Council, I move the adopting tax advantage bond compliance policies and procedures.
Okay. A motion's been made by Councilman Kidd.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kalu, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Question, what is a question for Mr. Harley?
Okay, Kalu, you got it.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Harley, he has a question.
Question, Mr. Harley, we in Orangeburg and, uh, our utilities are owned by the city.
Yes, sir.
And the city stands behind you a hundred percent in your efforts, and we know you do everything possible to assure Orangeburg resident and others that they are receiving the lowest possible rate. What can you say to our citizens tonight to reassure them of what you're doing and your, or your staff is doing to keep rates as low as possible?
Thank you. Mr. Hannah, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, that's a really good question. If you recall, uh, part of our process over the last several years has been to reinvest in. has been to reinvest in our system to make it, again, safe and reliable. And that has required us to do several things. One, council, at my request and recommendation, raised rates on electric and gas services in this current budget year. So I know that some of the people who have complained as we had this conversation quite often at the department when we hear from our customers, are feeling some of that as well, compounded with the normal increase with winter temperatures. And so that's what, that's what we're dealing with. As far as some of the lowest rates, we do believe that our rates are still pretty competitive if you look at the landscape of the systems around us. Again, it's not always apples to apples. We're a larger system than just about all the system except for the investor owns. But we also provide four different services, so they get one bill. So that one bill, when you compare it to your neighbor in another community that gets a bill from three or four different entities, will be higher than your one electric bill because you are getting a bill that contains electric, gas, water, and sewer. And so I remind folks of that. But also, would encourage people to give our staff a call. And we're happy to work with customers, we do it all the time, work with customers on ways to be more energy efficient. Also, our customer service staff is ready and willing and able to talk with them in real time about their usage so we can take a quick look at what's causing the high prices. Quite often, we find out that, I'll give a personal example of a relative of mine who called, and they said, something's going wrong. Something's, it's gotta be DPU. And I said, well, let us look at it. And we looked at it, and I said, something's running in your house constantly. And they said, no, I turn everything off. And I said, well, I'm looking at it, and everything's not off. And what it was is a small space heater. They thought they were saving on their utility bill by using a space heater, but actually driving up the cost. It was literally stealing money from them. The other thing we do is encourage people to set their temperature, ideally, in the wintertime, and I know people will tremble at this. Ideally, in the winter, the ideal temperature is sixty-eight degrees. Myself, and if you ask Mr. Nixon, it's forbidden in my house to go above sixty-eight degrees. And I actually set it a little lower. Because, and the reason I say that, every degree above sixty-eight, every degree, is seven percent additional on your cost. So if you go up seven degrees, that's nearly fifty percent increase on your bill. Right? So I encourage you, you know, to, when people come to you with those questions, tell them to give us a call. Our staff is happy to walk through the process with them. We've even sent staff out to homes. We do that on a regular basis to try to help resolve some of the issues and identify some of the challenges. If you're in an older home like mine, that was built in the early nineties, you are probably losing some heat to older windows, doors not being sealed. I know those are all really, sound like small things, but they're practical. And over a season, you end up spending a lot more money if you, if you don't pay attention to those kind of things. Yes, ma'am.
But, Mr. Harley, we, we as citizens have to realize that it was colder this year than usual. And like you say, a sixty-eight and sixty-nine doesn't do any good in my house. So we have to realize that it was colder and your temperature went up higher. So we have to learn how to budget and take care of what's going on because it's nothing more that, you know, the utility people could do probably other than try to keep as low, and we're trying to do that. So several, I know we had a lot of calls this year. But I explained to them, yeah, my house was the same way, and my temperature went up. So I have to fight the bullet and pay the bill.
Right.
But you gotta, you gotta keep warm.
Go ahead, Kalu.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I did not know we were going to discuss anything about, you know, finance at this time, since it's not in our.
On our agenda.
On our agenda.
Yeah.
But since you've allowed that to happen, I need to ask a question. Yes. In our financial report, item number three, there is a statement in there because last time, I know, we allowed you to increase the rates, you know, to the public. But then, when I was looking at the financial report, item number three, the line item there says, "Rates increases are necessary to recover increasing costs and keep the DPU profitable and able to maintain a high quality of service." So I'm thinking that down the line, you will come before the council to ask us to increase the rates again.
So, Dr. Kalu, that is an excellent question as well. If you recall, in our discussion, we have proposed an alternating, over the next couple of years, requests for potential rate increases based on, again, the reinvestment that we're doing in the system. Remember, last budget year, we did water and wastewater, which, if you look at water and wastewater, those rates are still not recovering the cost of the reinvestment. So we are, are losing money in those systems. So the request would be going forward as we look at the next budget cycle, at what, what level do we need to address rates again? If you recall, there was an option to do it all at once, but council elected to spread it out, to potentially look forward. And hopefully, things will change during that time. And so we'll see how it looks when we get to this next budget year. But to be quite honest with you, we will be looking very closely at what we need to do with respect to rates. I can't promise you what the request would be, but as we told you in our budget sessions, we're likely to need further rate increases going forward.
Okay, we will have to bring that in, because we got to go to executive session. Thank you so much. We sorry to get off on that. Okay. Mr. Harley have some attorneys, and they on the clock. And we want to make sure we keep it moving. He gets attorneys on the clock, and we supposed to be keeping it moving. Okay, executive session, number eight. Discussion of negotiation incident to propose contractual arrangement, propose sale and purchase of property, the receipt of legal advice, where the legal advice related to the matter covered by the attorney-client privileged project substation tax map. Section, South Carolina Code, section thirty-four dash forty-A two. Number nine, discussion and negotiation of incident proposed by contractual arrangements are the receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to pending, threatening, and potential claim and other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement and legal claim of the position of the public agents, agency in other adversity situation involving assertion against the agency of claim. Town of Norway, South Carolina Code, section thirty-four dash seventy, dash eight, dash two. Item number ten, discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, release of any employment. Discussion of negotiate incident to propose contractual arrangements and the receipt of legal advice, South Carolina Code, thirty-four dash seventy, dash A one, Finance Department. And then, performance, eleven, performance evaluation, Department of Public Utility Manager, South Carolina Code, section thirty-four, dash seventy, dash one. Item number twelve, performance evaluation discussion, City of Orangeburg Administrator, South Carolina Code, section thirty-four, dash seventy, dash A, dash one. We would like to entertain a motion to go in executive session.
I make a motion, we go in executive session?
Motion has been made, most of the second, my Councilman Grievous. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. And we gonna say good night. We will not re-return into open session. Council, I think y'all need to remain. We got to sign something, I think.
Okay.
Richard, Richard, we got to sign something.